As David explained, we certainly are very interested in acquiring the Joseph Ambler Inn. And I believe the owners, the current owners are in the audience tonight and I want to thank them for attending. I have been working diligently over the past year to secure the acquisition of the inn and also continue the legacy of this historic property. As many of you may know, the Almonds have owned the inn for 40 years and have done a great job of preserving the historic environment of the property. However, I don't think it's any secret that in terms of the condition of the inn currently, it does need some tendered loving care and some upgrades to the facility. Before I talk about what we have planned for the future, I just wanted to give you a very quick background of my experience. I am a native Ambler person. I actually grew up in the Willow Grove area. I graduated Upper Dublin High School in 1982. So UDHS is my alma mater. I have three sons and they've all graduated for Upper Dublin High School too. I've had many special occasions at the Joseph Ambler Inn, as maybe some of you had. I graduated Michigan State in 1986 and this is the only business that I've been in since 1986, which is the hospitality industry. Without boring you on my career from 1986 till I started my own hotel management investment company in 2005. My claim to fame was I started at the DFW Hilton Executive Conference Center in Dallas. I spent three years in Dallas, Texas, spent five years in Manhattan in the Hilton National Sales Office. I was the youngest Hilton National Salesperson of the year in 1992. From there, I went to Washington DC, spent five years in DC. And from there, I went to, back to Detroit, was Regional Director of Operations of Double Trees. And then I started with an investment called, firm called the Berwin Property Group, which is now Equus based in Philadelphia. We started a small hotel brand called Melrose Hotels, which was an independent hotel company. Melrose had a hotel in Dallas, in Washington DC and New York. We also operated the Great Southern Hotel, which was a historic property. Dallas and Columbus were both four diamond. And so that was the first 20 years of my career. The second 20 in 2005, we started Access Hotel and Resorts, which is a third-party hotel management company. And with that management company, we've managed anything from a small boutique in the Dominican Republic of 19 rooms to our largest property was Bakara, which was 360 beautiful resort-style rooms, 100,000 square feet of meeting space, seven restaurants on the coast of Santa Barbara. We've done everything from branded to non-branded hotels. But the key is that every hotel has a story. And so in 2015, I started the Boutique Inn Collection with our first hotel called the Inn at Thornhill. And so we have, if you go to boutiqueincollection.com, we now have nine different boutique properties as a collection. I own a three in Jackson, New Hampshire, the Inn at Thornhill, the Christmas Farm Inn, as well as the Inn at Whitney's Farm. We call that the Jackson Collection. And then on the other side of the White Mountain, we have the Rabbit Hill Inn and Thayer's Inn. What's unique about all five of those inns are they all are at least 100 years old. Rabbit is over 250 years old. So I'm very familiar with historic preservation and keeping the legacy of the tradition of the inn intact. And so we market those five inns plus a fishing resort in Belize, as well as we're opening up a product called the Ocean Ana Hotel, which will be in Wilmington, North Carolina. And then we have the Villas de Cusavati Resort. Those nine hotels now, we market and cross-pollinate. So the idea is that if you have a great experience at one of the inns in New England, hopefully you'll go to the one on the beach or potentially now with the acquisition of Ambler, stay at the Joseph Ambler Inn. So we'll incorporate loyalty programs so that people can use their stays at the various inns to experience the other inns. And with that, that affiliation, there is a third-party affiliation called Registry Hotel and Resorts. And Registry Hotel and Resorts is a membership-only, small boutique branded operation, which identifies high-end boutique hotels throughout the nation. You have to be accepted in the membership. It's a very arduous process going through a quality insurance program. And then inn owners actually vote for you to be in that brand collection called Registry. Rabbit Hill, which is one of the inns that I talked about, which was built in 1796 in Lower Waterford, Vermont, was the first Registry Hotel. So we have a very close relationship with Registry. And so that will hopefully also be an affiliation with Ambler, which will help spur additional occupancy. The, I don't think it's a secret to anyone in the room. The Joseph Ambler Inn is well-known. It's a hotel where everyone has had some type of special occasion, whether it's a wedding or a wake or an anniversary or a birthday. You know, the challenge has been though, and the reason that I've asked for the variance in zoning, is part of our plan is to do events year-round. And unfortunately, with the stipulation that you had looked at, there was some limitations in that we could only do events à la carte. We could only do events of five months a year. We couldn't have a group setting. And so that would make it very difficult to generate additional business for the inn. The inn, as you may know, has 50 rooms. And Sunday through Thursday, the inn does not have very much business. In fact, during the week, it runs about 35% occupancy. And so the idea to spur additional corporate business, whether that be a district pharmaceutical meeting, whether that be an incentive trip from outside Philadelphia, that companies in Philadelphia want to come to the outskirts, anything that you could imagine when you have business meetings, you need to convene. And so if you did a 150-person event, as you probably are aware, which the ballroom has, there'd be no place to feed them. And so the opportunity to do group functions is key to a part of our success. The other part that we will do is, you know, in order to measure the success of an inn, its intent to return and intent to recommend. And so in order to do that, we want to make sure that the environment creates a memorable experience, but also has a beautiful experience. And so with that, there needs to be some enhancements in the restaurant, in the outside patio, in the ballroom, to bring it and modernize it with still preserving the legacy of the historic inn. And so that is the idea behind asking you for this variance. I, because of where I grew up and where I am in my career, this to me is kind of my last, if you will, stand. I'm 60 years old, so I think I have a good 20 years in me to continue the legacy of the Joseph Ambler Inn and continue to grow the Boutique Inn Collection. So that's a little background on me, a little excitement, what we'd like to do for the Ambler Inn. And so I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I don't know if I'll be able to hear you, but you could write them and show them in the screen and hopefully I can answer.
So what's before the board tonight is an amendment to that stipulation that was originally filed back in 2001 that would provide for some of those improvements and uses to allow that business operation to be permitted. It should be noted that there's still, on Sunday and Thursday, it's still less than what our code requires for the noise ordinances. It is on par with the current code for Friday and Saturday, meaning it doesn't exceed, but is permitted. However, there is still a restriction on activities being held, events being held and uses of the property for these purposes being held 100 feet from neighboring property owners. So there still is a buffering requirement. And there still are those noise requirements. And still the original provisions related to monitoring outside noise activity upon conclusions of events still remains. So this, these amendments did take the considerations of the surrounding acres when these changes were presented. And it certainly doesn't exceed what would otherwise be permitted for any properties and township under the codes. And in addition, the township's long been planning a trail along the rear of the property between Joseph Ambler Inn and the neighboring properties. And this would effectuate that, make that part of the agreement that these meant be provided for just compensation along the rear. So there might be more people along the rear of the property, but that would be because of the access to the trail and not the use of the inn itself.
Thank you very much, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me, but I appreciate it.
Taxpayer filed an appeal for the property tax for the 2023 tax year. The property at issue is identified as parcel 460000706013 with an address of 273 DeKalb Pike Montgomery Township and owned by Pico by its tenant Citizens Bank. The property is improved with a commercial condominium building. The proposed settlement negotiated between the school district and the taxpayers at fair market value of $3 million for tax year 2024. Applying the applicable common level ratio, the assessed value would become 1.065 million, resulting in a decrease of the assessed value of $355,000 for 2024. The fair market value would become $3,237,082 for tax year 2025. Applying the applicable common level ratio, the assessed value would become $987,000, resulting in a decrease of the assessed value of $433,000 for 2025. The budget impact based on the proposed settlement, if the township agrees to it, the taxpayer will be due a total refund of $2,316.72 for the 24, 25 tax years. The assessed value of the property will decrease by $433,000 for the 2025 tax year. Recommendation, the solicitor's office has reviewed the proposed settlement and recommends the Board of Supervisors approve the settlement.
Safety unit, as well as any data they had collected relating to Gray's Lane, and then make recommendations about what traffic calming measures could be implemented. I contacted Pinoni Associates at the recommendation of several municipal managers and also because of their familiarity with the township and my familiarity with their work. Recommendations included people who use them for specific projects as well as their general traffic engineer. Their one engineer, Mark Bickerton, is also the president for the Partnership for Transportation, which is formerly the PTMA. And I spoke to him in the course of the conversation. I also requested that they include traffic calming measures that cannot be used and the reasons why. Because if you recall during the conversations, there was some conflicting information on a couple of things, as well as some skepticism on why we couldn't use things such as stop signs. So I wanted them to also include that. The proposal in the packet that they gave us, which enumerates the work they would do, the meetings they would attend, is it has a cost of $14,000. There is $20,000 currently allocated for general traffic engineering matters, which are not related to specific projects in the township. So tonight, I'm asking the board if you wish to consider this. Another option that we have is reaching out to PennDOT. They have an LTAP program, which they can do a study for you. And it's pretty comprehensive, but it's based on the funding that they still have available. And it's where you fall into their line of work to be done. And I didn't know how soon the board wants to see this done, but I also wanted to be cognizant of the cost of it and make sure I bring both options before you. Chief Peoples, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to put you on the spot, but...
No problem. So we've done several selective enforcements for traffic there. Since May 2nd is why I draw my numbers from, that's when the chicanes were removed. And there's been a total of 16 violations with 14 citations issued and two warnings issued. So the problem still does exist. And again, that's 12-plus miles per hour over the speed limit is what we have to do with our timing devices.
Yes, ma'am. 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 Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that I did when, Beth can attest to this, and we were there together at PSAT's conference that we recently attended in Hershey, PA, on behalf of the township. We took the opportunity to speak to vendors as well as our peers in townships of a similar size and ask them, you know, what they had in place in terms of traffic calming policies. As you would imagine, based on the popularity of the story, many of the people that we spoke with at PSAT's were familiar with our, including PennDOT, with our project. Yes. So, so we had a lot of people share, share feedback. But one of the, I guess the common threads was that it would be helpful for the township to adopt a traffic calming policy. And I don't see that incorporated here as a part of this scope. But I do feel as if, you know, a traffic calming policy in the broadest terms possible, you know, stipulates that within these residential areas, this is the policy that we're going, this is our protocol for addressing complaints. And it really kind of is a playbook then for us to follow. And I happened to speak with former Chief Bendig recently, who is in Uppermoreland, and apparently they also have a traffic calming policy in place. And he said it's pretty rudimentary. So, and it may not necessarily fit the bill for us, that one, that one. However, one of the things that I would like to see us is to take a broader look. Because not only did we hear from folks who live along Gray's Lane and, you know, those surrounding neighborhoods, but we also heard a lot of feedback from people throughout the township and other residential areas, like, hey, what about my street? What about my street? So I'd like to see us take a sort of a broader look at this to say, to see, all right, well, you know, this, this just addresses Gray's Lane. What are we doing about the rest of the residential areas in the township? And how are we going to address similar complaints that we're receiving moving forward in a way that's more just process-oriented, systematic, so that we don't run afoul of a situation like this again? One of the things that I really liked about, one of the versions of a traffic calming policy that was suggested, and this actually came from a conversation with someone from Pinoni, and it was that they really involved the neighborhoods in decision-making process. So, you know, they had to follow a protocol for making a complaint. There had to be traffic study that actually measured it. And then it had to meet all the same criteria that's established in PennDOT guidelines. But then, so once they knew that it qualified for traffic calming, that's when they started to engage the community in a dialogue on what they wanted to see happen. Like, here are the, here's what can happen. Here are the possible solutions that we can implement. And then the neighbors actually had to weigh in. And they, you can, you can change it, modify your policy to create the thresholds of agreement that have to be in place within the community in order to proceed with that traffic calming measure. So they got an opportunity to weigh in on what the actual solution was. And they, and they had to vote on it as a community. And I thought, well, that, you know, if we had had something like that in place, how much less feedback would we have received, negative feedback, would we have received from the community in this process? So I would advocate for something like that. And I don't see that as a part of this scope. And I would like to see something that was a little broader in nature to, to address the entirety of our township's residential streets, as opposed to, you know, spending this much on just that one stretch of road.
I think to do a policy, we wouldn't necessarily need them in the beginning. So the first thing I would do is reach out to the consortium members, all of Montgomery County managers. We all share information, gather what they have, start working through it at staff level with our own traffic engineer, and then bring a draft forward to the Public Safety Committee and then the board to see what you like. Because my one concern would be that even with, supposing there's, there's a recommendation, we definitely need traffic calming, and the residents don't want it, I need to hear from our solicitor's office, from our insurance provider, what that does. If we get something in writing that says we should do this and we don't because of resident feedback, what risk does that put the township in? But I think the idea of a dialogue, once you have the policy and says, you know, if we get a complaint and it's further investigation is warranted, it's not just an isolated one-off, then what happens next? Where does it go next? So if it goes to the traffic, monthly traffic engineers meeting, and then a recommendation comes out, and then it goes to public safety, and then if it's coming before the board, we announce that there's going to be a discussion about traffic calming measures on Road A. And we encourage people to come to that, to that public meeting.
I think the, the policy from what my understanding is, to your point, is it doesn't stipulate that it has to be complaint-based and, and that they have to vote on it. Like, the township can act. If, obviously, if there's a public safety issue, we have an obligation to act, right? So it doesn't say that the township, you know, that it, that it has to come from, you know, that source, if you will. But that, you know, but that is, if a community were to get together and say, we really want the township to take, to take some action here, it just gives a sort of a playbook, step by step, all right, this is what we need to do. This is the protocol we're going to follow.
We can certainly look into that after the wall that heals is behind us.
Of course.
But this, this also really brings up awareness. I think that what we're trying to do is change behavior. And I think that we can start with more public service announcements. Even the signs that we ordered for residents to pick up. So there are signs that say, you know, they have the Montgomery Township Police logo on there. Lawn signs, they're available to the police department, residents can put them on their lawns, you know, to remind people. And, you know, to some of the points that were made, obviously enforcement is key. But, you know, based on what we're seeing with numbers with the red light cameras and based on what we're seeing with numbers with people not stopping for school buses, enforcement's not the only way. You know, education is great, but again, like people who just ignore it. So I think for this, you know, it would be a different way of doing things. And I think we would love to take a stab at it, to see what we could put together and then bring before, you know, a draft to both the committee, the Public Safety Committee, and then ultimately the board, just to start reviewing it.
Exactly. Yeah, because I think we, I'm definitely, I mean, this is a lot to spend in one area. And we know we have issues in other areas within our community. So, I mean, I love the idea of a policy, but I'd love to hear, I don't know if anything was shared, Tanya or Beth, like a real, you know, a place that has this policy in place and they had a real issue and, you know, stepped through all the way to resolution, quote unquote, resolution, resolution being that they did something on XYZ road or area.
And PennDOT, I did stop to talk to PennDOT. They have a lot of resources available, as well as the study option as well. So I think getting in the queue for something like that is also a really great opportunity. But they also have resources that we can make available, whether it's to the community or through public, in, from public service announcements, through social media, et cetera, but to let people know, what are the options? Did you know that these are the things that can be done and that can't be done? That's what people have to realize, what, what our limitations are. But also have an awareness, I was very well involved in something like this many years ago about, you know, what, what the consequences of not doing things, things happen and what the stats are on people, residents, people walking. The 4,000 people a year in America are killed in neighborhoods or crossing streets every year. And so that, that kind of stuff is startling. And you say, we don't want to be part of that statistic, which is why we're taking this seriously. But putting that kind of information out, I think makes people pause and say, oh, okay, I see why this is a problem. We don't want that story in our town.
Well, PennDOT is a good partner, for example. They worked with us when we put the beacons in at both parks in Kansas. They were the ones who came out, Kevin Lilis from PennDOT met us at the site, said, if you're going to do this, you need to put a refuge island in the center of upper state because of the width of the road. If you're doing it over Keenness, he suggested we put it here versus here. PSAT's also, their monthly magazine highlights successful projects. So they would be another resource to reach out to and say, you know, are you aware of any that have, you know, that you've written about, you know, dealing with traffic and policies that are in place? And I will certainly reach out to Chief Bendig as well.
Do you have any idea, Tom, and what the timing would be if we reached back to PennDOT to kind of, you know, do this?
No, I can ask them. I can ask them, just put it on their tab. We'd like it done. I don't know. I feel like it wasn't that long for the one that's in your packet for Country Club Drive that they did for us. And I can have Officer Jenkins reach out to them and ask them what timeline it would be. Yeah. And we could, because we made the, the other reason I brought, we made that representation that, you know, we wanted to have somebody who was separated from this whole issue to look at it. And, you know, they put together the proposal and I can certainly tell them that, you know, we're still considering it, but we might reach out to them again into a broader context and say, you know, if we wanted you to look at township as a whole, we're, help assist us with this policy. But I think we should start it at the staff level. We have some very dedicated people, especially in Highway Safety Unit and Chief Peoples and then Public Works. Let us work through it, you know, with our traffic engineer and see what we can come up with. And I'll reach out to Consortium and get samples from the managers.
One of the things that stood out for me was that they would review existing speed and volume data provided by the township. And, you know, we are, we know we have an issue there. We know this already. So I struggled with the dollar amount and we're giving them the data to analyze, I guess. And then for an additional 2,000, they can go out and get the data again for us. So it was...
We have the data because of the Highway Safety Unit and the trailers that have the computers in them now. You know, when we had that meeting, Mr. Drummond with Gilmore and Associates said that there was no study done. They did not do the study because we had the tools to do it. So Officer Jenkins, Officer Byrne, prior to them, Officer Dunlop, all worked diligently to collect data for us. And then I did forward it on to Pinoni so that they could see what we did have and that they, we wouldn't need them to do anything further in that respect.
And that kind of lends me to this price tag, I think, is so high. We're, and we're giving them a lot of the information. So, okay. Any public comment from anyone? Because I see a couple of familiar faces, I think. Okay. So I'm, sorry.
Before we move on, would it be possible to get more than just Pinoni? Get a couple of different traffic engineers to say?
Well, I think if you're not going to consider just Gray's Lane, if you're going to go to the PennDOT route, then we should do that. And we shouldn't, I mean, engage in anybody else until we get a better scope. Are we looking township-wide to help us develop a policy or fine tune a policy? Or do we want them to go out there and study neighborhoods? If we want something comprehensive, it's going to be a lot more than this, you know? You, we're very fortunate because a lot of the projects we've done recently relating to like our traffic signals, our beacons, we've had grants for, the beacon that we're putting on Stump Road, we have a grant for. But engineering firms, this is the price tag when you do a study like that. There's really, you know, their, their costs are what they are as well.
So if we can do whatever we can to get on PennDOT, because I don't want Gray's Lane residents like in limbo for another sponsoring year.
Understood. That's why Officer Jenkins would be the best one, because he has the contact with that particular division of PennDOT. Great. Thank you.
And then, let's just say PennDOT is another year out or something and we really don't want to wait that long. I mean, if we, may it be Pinoni or another area, can we take... I mean, if we, may it be Panoni or another area, can we take pieces of this? Meaning, can we just, again, we know there's already an issue on Gray's Lane. I'm just using Gray's Lane cuz that's been the issue. Um, you know, that we have them still share with us, what are all of our choices from a traffic calming standpoint? And then what are the reasons why we can or cannot do X Y Z? Is that something that, you know?
But that's what I was asking them to do. I told them that I wanted to know everything. So even if it's something that's not palatable to the township. Say like speed bumps, because you see speed bumps in like parking lots versus speed tables, speed humps. I wanted everything on the table and why it could or couldn't work on Gray's Lane. Right? Cuz not everything isn't, so we know stop signs can't be used to calm traffic or to control speed. That is a Pendot regulation across the board. And if you put them in and you don't have a study that said they're warranted and you try to enforce it and someone challenges it, it's not gonna fly.
I for, as a friend, since like one of the things, it wasn't necessarily presented as a part of this, but it was something that I I sat through. Um, one of the first PSAT's conferences that I ever attended to, uh, on behalf of the township, I sat through a traffic calming, ironically. A traffic calming session. And they went through a variety of different techniques that they uh, were finding successful in other communities. And one of which was a, it was like a painting technique. Yeah, and it was paint, but it was kinda, it's like this raised paint. Um, and it it vibrates when you go over it, almost like a rumble strip. Wood. And so, and it's and it's been a very effective technique used in other communities. However, and you know, in a, in a residential area, you know, not only is it vibrating when you go over it, but it makes an audible noise. So it, you know, it wasn't something that was necessarily recommended as a traffic calming approach to use on Gray's Lane because the neighbors would likely object to the sound. Um, but but there are, there are other techniques that weren't necessarily discussed as a part of this process like that. You know, that, you know, if you if you ask for a study to be done, they're gonna come back with lots of their, well, there's lots of different options. Streetscaping, there's lots of different things that can be done. It's how much do we want to invest in it? And there's always some give and take related to, you know, the the impact on the neighborhood, the community.
Two weeks ago, I watched a webinar on traffic calming, which ironically came across, and we were mentioned twice. So. Uh, and they didn't know I was, cuz you know, you're on there, there's a gazillion people on there. So, you know, we all have our screens blacked and they're showing, you know, the presentation. And I heard Montgomery Township, my head popped up and, you know, it's like, okay, you know, and then they went through the process and the feedback we got. And just today, we had an email from um, a media outlet in Atlanta asking us um, what the update was and how effective they've been.
Okay, so right now, we know we're not making a motion to um, for this. Uh, so what, just so we're clear, what are our next steps?
So we would table this matter. Um, Officer Jenkins, um, the next time he's in, um, Chief Peoples will relay the conversation to him. He'll reach out to Pendot at least to cover the Gray's Lane portion. And I'll start accumulating data um, from the managers and from other communities, even in Bucks, to see if I can get some policies together that after the wall that heals is ever will be able to start reviewing and working on to prepare a traffic calming policy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Any public comment? Um, okay, item number twelve. New business, apartment reports. Amazing. I think um, tonight we have planning supplies. Speaking an update on in-house projects.
Uh, we we've had um, two big projects, um, wrapping up over the last two years. The first one was scanning. Um, we are in our second year of scanning. Um, all of the property files have been completed upstairs. All the zoning hearing board files have been completed. Land development is underway. Um, there was a little bit of a hiccup where they scanned the entire file, all seven hundred pages into one document instead of breaking them down into sections, which we had requested. Um, so they had to, fortunately, we caught it in the first round. So now that has been corrected, so they're moving forward again. Um, so now they're focused on the basement, which is the old land development files. Um, the newer ones we'll ask them to do at the final stage cuz they do take the records with them. And um, they don't do it in-house. They box them up, take them away. If we have a request in the meantime, we can reach out to them, they'll pull it, scan it quickly and send it to us. And they've been very responsive on that. We usually get it within twenty-four hours. Um, it's up to us. I have requested a year. Um, there is a fee associated with it. But we wanted to make sure everything was scanned properly before I tell them to destroy it. Just in case we had any issues. New documents that have come in since then, uh, we are scanning in-house. Um, we do have a plotter that we purchased. And we have our copier that can handle up to eleven by seventeens. And that has been relatively smooth. Um, we scan it, we can link it right in and it goes right to that property. It's a separate PDF, but it's all linked to that property. And I have to say, it's been wonderful to have the information at your fingertips while you're on the phone with somebody. Instead of having to call them back, run down to the basement, grab the history file and come back up. So it's been, uh, between GIS, the permit software and LaserFusion, it's been much more efficient to gather information for somebody on the phone and be able to answer their questions. Uh, so that's been very nice. Uh, the second is the Tyler software.
The copies are here, but okay, don't need originals for anything.
Now, I mean, some of the older plans, um, they're hard, they were hard to read on paper also. Um, but no, they have been for the most part, very good and and easy to read. So our our next
I was just gonna say that what, part of the rationale for scanning these documents beyond it, it was time. Um, when we had Ida go through Upper Dublin Township, they lost the roof of their municipal building. They, it was in the middle of a hurricane, they had seven inches of water. They had filing cabinets fall over into that water. They had documents that were just completely destroyed and couldn't be recovered, even though they tried to dry out a lot of things. And I didn't wanna see us ever be put in that position. So we made this a priority internally and started budgeting. And uh, Mary Ann and her staff have been great, um, working with the vendor and getting it done. And to her point, you know, the customer service that you can now be on the phone with someone and be able to look something up and give them information, um, is is wonderful for them as well.
Um, and I'm sorry, more more so my question was around, um, just needing the original, and this might be the old banker hat I'm putting on now. Like sometimes we have to have the original document.
They do, they do comply with the state's record retention requirements cuz they're in the PDF A format. So that's all been considered when we did the scanning project. Um, our second um, project is the new software. Uh, for the last year, we spent time configuration and implementation with the Tyler group. Um, we also did data conversion, um, all that to prepare to go live and implement the software. We had a full week of training, April twenty-first. We had to shut down the office and train everybody on the all new program and software. We were go-live the week of April twenty-eighth. Um, we did have a Tyler representative here during that week, which was nice to have him on hand as we were going through the process, um, all the new software, um, learning the system. Um, it's gonna take some time. Uh, we're, we're a little bit slower until we get through how their workflow is different from our last software. We do still have access to the last software, just in case, but all of the data did convert over. There are some areas we're still working through, uh, credit card processing. Um, in-house, we're still configuring at our desktops to be able to do credit card processing. Um, we do have the capability, we haven't turned it on quite yet cuz we're testing it to send an invoice electronically and they can pay online with a credit card. Um, that has been functioning, we just haven't turned it on, on yet to go. Um, we're also struggling a little bit with scheduling inspections. Uh, we're able to do it, it just takes a little longer. So we're trying to find ways with Tyler to improve their calendar so that we can see what's on the screen and what's scheduled while we're on the phone with somebody. And that's something that we're working with them on. Um, two new features that we had that we didn't have before, well, obviously, credit card payments was one. Um, another one is our civic access, which is an online portal, um, which we have not we wanted to get used to the system in-house first before we turn the the online portal on. So residents and contractors will be able to submit permits online. Uh, we'll start with the basic shed, fence, deck, um, keep it simple. And and then we'll start adding the other permits as we get more used to the system. But they can upload documents, they can upload insurance certificates, they can pay their permit fees. Um, we have a hub page that tells us when something comes in. Confirm it all, calculate the fee and it sends out an invoice for them to pay online. Um, and the other one is now our inspectors out in the field, um, have an iPad. So their inspections are now not on a piece of paper with the folders, they're on an iPad. And if the, once we go further in, all the plans and the permits will be scanned into the system. So they'll have everything at their fingertips. They can take photos if they need to. They can research if they're out in the field and they happen to see work going on, they can actually look up to see if there's an active permit in the system. So that's, um, that's a new, new one for us. So we're learning how to use the iPad out in the field. We can also use it for code enforcement and for any other, um, things that we wanna use it for. But currently, we have it for inspections and then code enforcement will come later. But we've been busy.
I'll just jump right in. Parks Board meeting, uh, was canceled. We were supposed to have it out in one of the parks and, uh, unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate. And so, uh, our next board meeting, uh, Parks Board meeting is in Jan. Uh, but we did have our sewer authority meeting. And big topic of discussion was an impending rate increase. Staff presented a proposed schedule, uh, that has, you know, it's like a standard service fee as and then a a rate based on usage. Uh, they presented a chart. I believe you can go to the Sewer Authority's website and and actually view what was presented. It's a public meeting, so that's a public document. Um, but it not, not too terrible, uh, but uh, something that is likely to be presented to our board for approval later this year. Once their board, um, finally approves it. The, on on a happier note, um, Roast Twig Bathroom, uh, the project is coming to a close. And they're planning a grand opening and a ceremonial first flush for the new bathroom on Saturday, June seventh. So, um, looking forward to seeing everyone out there for the ceremonial first flush for this wonderful um, new bathroom project.
Okay, um, our EIC meeting is going on right now in the room right next to us. So I'm missing that as we speak. However, I know that they, what they're doing is assessing locations possibly to bring to the next Parks Board meeting. Um, to look for areas that they could either naturalize or add to Meadow, which would reduce mowing, which is good. Uh, but also, uh, improve erosion, water quality, pollinators, save money in those respects and improve um, environmental impact. Um, so that's what they're doing right now. And hopefully we'll have something to come to the next meeting with as well. They presented to our board, um, a month or so ago. Um, our business development partnership was canceled this, um, this month as well. However, I did attend the North Monaco Recycling Consortium. And we have part of what we do, we're part of eleven municipalities that uh, kind of pool their, our resources so that we, uh, are paying individually as municipalities uh, to comply with Act one oh one and our our requirements to recycling. And I wanna say Montgomery Township does a really great job. Like when I see them, I wanna give ourselves a little gold star for all the efforts that we do. However, they don't give those out. Um, but I will say this, that the DEP is, has proposed changes that are coming. Um, Carolyn, you may have heard about this, but, um, with this, they are looking to reduce the amount of commercial tonnage by almost fifty percent. Actually, I think maybe more than fifty percent. And the reason is, is that certain municipalities have these ginormous mega warehouses, like Amazon warehouses. So they are getting like a ju- a huge, um, check. And and it's taking away from so many of the smaller ones, it just proportionate share. So what they're trying to do is identify where people's recycling is coming from and try, basically that may impact us. Uh, and I know that our consortium is trying to work with them on how the, how we can try and work with that. But I I do know that we do have a lot of commercial tonnage because we have such a high commercial, um, uh, presence here in Montgomery Township. Um, so this would impact us, it would be for next year. Uh, but we're trying to work with them to try and understand how we could, um, still get credit for what we're doing because we don't have an Amazon warehouse. So it's, it's actually that we have a lot of other things that, but we do a good job doing that. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on that because it's something that happens behind the scenes and people don't realize, um, the impacts of these things. But that could affect our bottom line. So that's my update on that.
Uh, Rec Center did not have a meeting, but we did have a public safety meeting. Um, our fire department chief shared with us again the need for the nineteen people to be hired. And because what we are doing is not sustainable, uh, we had a discussion with our committee. Um, he also let us know that, um, he put out a feasibility study, a, an RFP for that, which will be due back uh, mid-June. Uh, so we'll see how that, uh, kinda falls together. But, uh, really need to move forward with, uh, looking at this and really making some plans for uh, a paid fire, uh, department. Um, and then Chief Peoples reviewed with us some of the ordinances, which need some updating and tweaking and and that kind of thing. One of the things we talked about was a traffic, a truck traffic restriction um, that, um, for overnight parking. Um, so some of the trucks are idling on our roads or our parks and that's not going to, not allowed. Um, there was another one with parking. Um, we have neighbors who live in cul-de-sacs who are parking in the middle of the cul-de-sacs. And that is not, um, the way parking is supposed to happen in cul-de-sacs. So we'll address that. Um, there's just no way for muds and sea vehicles to get around some others cars that are in the middle there. So some of that thing, some of that needs to be addressed. Um, there are some parking issues happening, um, on Country Club Drive and Pine Crest as well. Again, safety issues with getting around things. Um, I think that, uh, pretty much covers, um, what we went over. Um, I am always interested in hearing the bus patrol and red light camera numbers. So I appreciate you sharing those with us, Chief. Bus patrol, hundred and sixty-seven, uh, in April with a hundred and thirty citations going out. Um, so we've really have a lot happening there. The red light cameras, nine hundred and thirty-six violations, um, nine hundred approved warnings. So we were still in that phase where we weren't doing citations. We've moved to citations now, Chief. So May twel- as of May twelfth, if those nine hundred would have gotten a citation. So we'll see what happens for May now.
Wow.
Chief, I was, I liked the April, uh, crash heat map report. It was, I found that to be really, uh, illuminating and, uh, really, yeah, well. Give it a straight up, if you will.
Yes.
Uh, but, uh, but I thought that was, uh, really interesting to see where all the, all the crashes are actually taking place. So thanks for preparing that for us.
And I do not have an update. I did not make it to, um, my senior meeting. Um, I was away. Um, so I don't have any update other than I know, cause it's, you know, as I mentioned last meeting's been a huge focus on us having our, um, seminars. And I know we have Deb, you might know, I know we have the one in June for the rebate. Do we have two in June or just? Two in June. I don't know, yeah. Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't think of the second one. I do know the first one. Um, or I don't know if it's the first one, but our, two of our school board directors are participating. So that's why it's sticking out for me cuz I was just talking to them and sending them the flyer to, um, post. But it's on the twenty-fifth, if I'm not mistaken, at seven post, but it's on the 25th, if I'm not mistaken, at seven in the evening. So, but other than that, I do not have enough to eat.
Tomorrow night, stop the cable yet.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Tomorrow evening at seven, right?
Seven.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second? Any public comment? All those in favor? Thank you.